Welcome. I'd like to welcome to our -- this is the Town of Newbury Planning Board meeting for the 20th of February 2019, and I'd like to indicate that I am the acting chair, Pete Pagos. Our planning board chair, Rachel McMinister, is with us remotely, and she'll be participating, but she's unable to be here due to geographic distance requirements. So in accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, all will be called as roll call boards. And I would ask that everyone begin to introduce themselves.
Kristen Grubbs.
Larry Murphy.
George Morris.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
And I'm Pete Pagos. So I'd like to start off the meeting by going to our minutes. We have two sets of minutes that we're going to review tonight. The first would be the minutes from the 19th of December. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
Okay, are there any comments on these? Okay, entertain a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move second.
Great, any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Roll call, that's right.
Rachel?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Peter, yes. Very good. We're going to move to the second set of minutes, which are the minutes for the 2nd of January 2019. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I've reviewed them.
I can't vote on them.
Yes.
Okay, all righty. Any questions or discussion? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Great, I move for the discussion. All in favor of accepting the minutes, roll call. Rachel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Let's move into our town planners report.
All right. Just a reminder that the 18th Annual Citizen Planner Training Collaborative Conference is scheduled for Saturday, March 16th. Registration is open. They have over 18 workshops, some of which are some basic workshops and some of which actually will get us credit with our insurance company, which those are good. But they also have some which are -- they always have something that's relevant to whatever we're working on, and this time they're going to be having a workshop on open space and low-impact development, area bylaws, cutting edge and behind the curve, which may address the natural resource protection zoning that we're going to be looking at. So I am going to be going if anybody wants to sign up and go with me.
And that location is?
It's in Worcester.
Okay.
At Hutter Cross, right in Green Center. And the registration fee is, I believe, $75, and the planning board will reimburse any numbers. I just submitted an expense report to me. Second item is, I don't know if you all remember, that we received a Chapter 91 Waterways License Application a while back, the Kentway Bridge Replacement and Kent Creek sort of rehabilitation that area for fish and wildlife, and that has been granted, so I just wanted to let the board know that. We've gotten a notice of a joint public hearing from Newbury Board for some rezoning that they're planning to do in the story of the Bow Street area, and that hearing is going to be held on March 6th, which unfortunately is a planning board night, so nobody can go. And this is just kind of an FYI. The Governors Academy is doing an upgrade to Old Road, and so we've gotten some plans for that, and I actually need to find out exactly what role the planning board may or may not play in this. But it was before the Conservation Commission last night, and they did continue the hearing. There's some concern, there's a rural pool at the west end of Old Road, and I think the COMCOM is looking for some more information regarding the calculations of increase in impervious there and what the impact is going to be. They're proposing to widen it from right now, it varies in width from about 13 feet to, actually, the hottest is about 22 feet up at kind of right at the top of the curve, and they're proposing to make it 18 feet of pavement for the entire length with hardened shoulders, except at the end near the dorms where they're going to make it 20 feet. That's been reviewed by the fire chief. He's comfortable with that as long as they maintain the 20 feet. We are concluding their completion. So, that's it for the town planners report.
It's kind of private, right?
It is a private room, yeah. There was a subdivision done back in the 60s, I can build a zone by the academy. So I don't know whether the planning board, since it's not an accepted road, I'm not sure whether it counts under site plan review for increase of impervious pavement. So I'm going to check the sand and town council just to see what our role may be.
We have four minutes until our public hearing is supposed to start.
Do you want to try the ears on the course?
Sure, the ears on the course.
So the board selectmen met last night. I think the two major things on the agenda, one was a report from the building committee of the status of the police station project. They've effectively completed its, you know, floor plan for the project, and are going into design development. They're working on the site design now. I know that there are things that they need to deal with in terms of elevation change and various other things like that. It looks like the project we're becoming under current schedule before the planning board for site plan review in early May with pre-application conference in April. The chair of the committee, Bob Connors, requested that we try to coordinate public hearing with the Conservation Commission, so we'll see how that works out. And the other item was, I did present the zoning changes that are being proposed to the selectmen, sort of went through what they are and why they're being proposed, and they did refer them back to the board for a public hearing. So one thing we need to do tonight is set that public hearing date. They did make some suggestions, and, you know, those are things that the board can take up during a public hearing.
I want to thank Martha for the presentation last night. It was very smooth.
Thank you.
COMCON?
Actually, Rachel wasn't there.
Remotely, perhaps?
No report.
Other than the Old Road thing last night, I know Doug did talk to me on one other project down on Plum Island at 35th Street, which is being continued. Those are the only two items that we talked about.
ZBA?
ZBA is a meeting tomorrow night with about six items on it. It should be a pretty active meeting, by the way.
Continuing, is it MPPC?
MPPC, the Commissioners Meeting is tomorrow night. I think they're going to be focusing on the Thillen. They're focusing each time on one of the 15 communities in front of the region. And I think I mentioned next Tuesday is a coordinated planning meeting at which Chris Bledgman is going to be talking about housing, and there's also going to be a presentation on natural resource protection zoning. So I think Kristen's going to be coming to that with me.
That's great. Thanks.
All right, well, we're at 7:10, so at this time I'd like to open the continuance of the public hearing. Open space residential development, OSRD, a special permit application, 170 Orchard Street, Matt R. 20 block 23A, applicant, town cross realty trust. Martha, do you want to start?
Sure, so following up on some correspondence with the applicant, Bill Lester, Chair and cross, starting last Friday, he informed me that, in fact, they do not have the responses to the questions and comments that have been raised so far. And so we received a letter today requesting a continuance of the public hearing with no discussion tonight. So the board will need to set a date to continue time being certain. He says, "We are intending to submit updated engineering information the week of February 25th. However, we are aware that the next best meeting date might be March 20th, and we would be most comfortable extending to that date. Thank you for your consideration of this extension continuance request." We do know that we have our zoning public hearing, and we're going to have to schedule our zoning public hearing for March 20th in order to meet the town meeting schedule. The selectmen are going to be reviewing the warrant on the 26th and signing it on April 2nd. So I don't know if the board wants to consider having two public hearings at night or continue the Orchard Street public hearing farther out.
Rachel, I just want to kind of pull you into the conversation on this one. We had had a conversation about receiving materials in a kind of timely manner, and I was kind of concerned this morning that, trying to email it, I think 451, indicating that there wasn't going to be information for tonight. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that.
Well, I think we've made it clear, and I don't think there was an expectation on anyone's part that we would have had to go into much deliberation without having received and/or reviewed any information. So we would have just continued one way or the other.
Martha, do you feel stat to that?
No, that's it, I think. You know, there are a lot of outstanding issues. It's certainly, I think, an inconvenience for any butters who are here, who are interested in the project. I am, a couple of them have been in touch with me, and if any of you are here for that particular project, if you want to give me an email, I can certainly let you know if things are actually not going to be, you know, a scheduled hearing is not going to take place, just so you don't end up continuing to come all the time. Just kind of trying to set up some sort of a system of communication.
I have a question, and I address the board. Channing Howard, 61 Central Street, in reference to this project. Every single public hearing that we've had on this project, this applicant has been incomplete, and his staff has not all even been here. Is this regular practice of the public hearings to just continue when butters and concerned citizens are waiting to hear the plan, and we continually have to come in here to find out the applicant is not ready for the hearings?
Martha, do you want to add?
You know, I think that's a very good question, and at some point, it's something that I want to follow up on to see, you know, at some point, is it appropriate for the board just to say it might be time to withdraw or do something else because it's, I mean, we have had public hearings that continue for a very long time, 15 months, but usually it's because there's information that needs to be followed up, not a series of cases in which the applicant isn't ready with continuance.
Okay, second question, if you would. Has your board contacted town council in reference to the owner of the house on Pearson Drive for the second egress if it was not a cluster zoning in their position on a town board? That would be a lane digger.
Yeah. I haven't had any conversations with council about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, so we need to pick a date to continue this. So Martha, what are our choices again?
So I think we had said that it would be best to do it sometime after the middle of March. March 20th was the date that was discussed, but we do have our zoning public hearing that night, so, which could be lengthy, hard to say. So the next date after that would be April 3rd. The two meeting dates in April are the 3rd and the 17th. I did send a note out to Bill this afternoon to ask what his availability was in April, and I haven't heard back from him, so I think the board should just set a date.
Do we have anything else for April?
Not so far.
Rachel, do you have any concerns with either of those dates?
Not at all, I would be in favor of pushing it out to April.
George, do you have any concerns?
No.
So you want flexibility?
No, I agree we ought to go into April. I think we should keep March 20th for the zoning, and not either of those days work for me.
Kristen?
Yeah, I'm actually, I have a town on the 20th, so.
Right, right.
Then April on tape would be better.
Since you're making up part of our special permit, so.
Okay. Prefer the 3rd or the 17th?
I think it would be probably reasonable to aim for the 3rd. I expect with the Gulf Center hearing starting up again on March 26th, we'll be, that may be continued until April as well.
And the 17th.
Maybe unless it falls on the selectmen's night instead, but we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there.
With that discussion completed, I entertain a motion to continue this hearing to the 3rd of April.
Time's through?
Please.
What time?
7:10.
You want to start at 7:10?
7:10, that's fine. I move to continue the public hearing in this matter until April 3 at 7:10 PM.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Rachel, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. Concluding that public hearing, we will continue on to our second public hearing, so this would be continuation of public hearing, excuse me, site plan review application, propository amputation of Newbury's Upper Green on the High Road, Green Street, and Hamlet Street, assessed with Matt Lee 09, block 75, applicant, new PR. I'm going to just get Rachel out. Good evening.
Hey.
Is that okay, George?
Yeah. Yeah. So you already have one? Yeah. I'm going to see another one. Sorry, it's crooked.
Excuse me, instead of tilting that towards the wall, why don't you put that flat against the wall so those people over there can see it a little better?
There you go. Well, Vern's going to, I think, speak mostly to this, but we have a revised plan that incorporates a lot of the feedback that we received at a prior meeting with the selectmen and planning board combined, and then also happens to follow a meeting we had with Historic New England, who were tremendously, which was tremendously supportive of the project, so we're lucky, we feel embraced by a great group. So, any thoughts on that, folks? Can you comment on that meeting?
Yeah, well, with Historic New England, we kind of gave them the overview on the most updated plans, and honestly, yeah, they were enthusiastic about it, encouraged us to dive a little deeper into the historical value of the green, which we are currently doing and have done, but, yeah, no, it was extremely positive meeting.
And, yeah, and so we're doing a little bit of extra work just so that folks at our public meeting, which comes up on the 25th, will be able to see sort of the changes to the green that have taken place over time and understand this as part of the evolution of changes, since the green hasn't been a static installation, certainly. It's been changed over time in various ways, and Historic New England thought it would be helpful to people in order to place these changes in context of the many changes that have taken place over time, but the ones that we outlined, they thought were sensible, and they were happy with them. So anyhow, I think Vern can present these amended plans, which really, we incorporated a lot of the feedback that folks shared with us at the last meeting, so that we want to hone in on what's the common denominator here that people really like.
Yeah.
Starting with the cattle. Just kidding. Just kidding.
You know, actually, it was wonderful to meet with Historic New England, and they asked us to put together a chronological order, which we pretty much already had, except for certain aspects of the newest, or as they said, iterations. I like that word, iterations, because things change over time. And the things that we don't know, and it's because the town selectmen, as I talked to Ellen, I guess there was damage to a lot of the old records and so forth, so bottom line, they don't have the record because it should be in the town selectmen. We know when the owner of Brock was put in, that was in 1805, after the revolution. We don't know when the other two monuments were put in. We do know, just by common sense, it had to be after World War I and after World War II. So after 1918 and after 1945, that's common sense. But we're hoping to hone in on that. We sent a letter to the Historical Commission and asked them, they might be able to help us to come up with that, since they're, we know that timeline anyway. The other thing that they suggested is, we don't know the flagpole or when the benches were put in. So those are the iterations that have happened. What we're proposing is the new iteration, is to keep, and again, we want to preserve and enhance the upper green for the history and bring attention of the history and the significance of the upper green to the users of today as well as generations and generations in the future. History is, by definition, it's about the past, the present, and the future. We're trying to do that with the upper green and bring all of this history to the significance of what it is today and how it should always be in people's mind as we move into the future with technology and so forth. People lose sight. So bottom line, it's a pretty simple, plain design of just, we want to replant around the corriery, coming from the original, the oldest photos that we could come up with, when it used to have the majestic American elm. The American elm has died off because of Dutch elm disease, but they were, they had the big, large canopies. Now later, as Dutch elm disease, I'm, was, I haven't kept up with it, but I certified arborists for years in urban foresters, this is what I'm training. And what ended up happening with those trees, because this is a big issue with townsfolk, I understand, is that they planted, you can see other pictures where they have trees, planted one against each other, especially along Green Street, that was because as trees were dying off, they wanted new trees to take their place. But it's overcrowded. Those trees could not live to their full majestic form and really thrive because they're jammed in, but there was a reason for that. What we're suggesting is go back to the original layout of the upper green and using zelkova trees. The reason we choose zelkova is because they have, it's the closest, they get 60-plus feet high, 60, 80 feet. The American elm gets 65 to 100, but on average, about the same height as the exact same form. The difference is, even though we have the Princeton elm, which came up in a meeting, which is highly resistant to Dutch elm disease, you don't want monoculture, it is not completely resistant. Zelkova has no known insect or disease problems, and it has the closest form, so it's considered amongst arborists and urban foresters as new American elm. So we want to create that look, move them in 22 feet so that they're not going to be encumbered by the lines and be destroyed over time and entangled. This gives them plenty of room to give that original look. We also have noticed in all the pictures, but there's two reasons for this, that there are no trees originally right along High Road, because way back in the 16, 1700s, we still had that roadway. They didn't plant right there in front of the pond, which was the original watering hole, and then hand dug out by the selectmen, who asked them to dig it down so that they create a larger hole, because it's fed by an actual stream, which once crossed Hamlet Street, runs down, and then crosses across Parker, just so you know. Now they dug that out because of the water, it's a watering hole for the cattle and the livestock. When they moved from the lower green in 1642 to the upper green, we can go on and on, more on Monday about the whole history, et cetera, et cetera, but long story short of it, is the reason we want to replace and put the zelkova, which replicate the American elm, is to create the original layout and the original look of the upper green, as shown in the upper photographs. And the reason we are not going to plant here is because there are wires, and if you look, and we have pictures, oh, there's one tree left, it's completely like been pruned to death, and there's a couple of stems, and sucker's on its way out like the rest of them, which are stumps today. So we are bringing it right to the edge, and we're carrying on, which is on another page, which shows the tree and planting plan, but we're not going to plant here, they wasn't planted originally, and we can't because there's not enough room because of the wires. So we're going right back to the original look of the layout of the green. The other thing that we're changing from our original design, if anyone's seen it, is we have eliminated, as people have suggested, the walkway, which comes around the backside perimeter of the pond. We agree, that's great, leave it grass, give it the pastoral setting that it was set aside for. It's actually in the writing that in 1642, this was a pastoral town, in 1635, it was set up as a pastoral town, as a cattle town. They sent the cattle and the people over on the ship James from England at the exact same time. Newbury is a cattle town. Newbury had over 3,000, had a cattle back in 1791. It is still an agricultural town. They split between Newburyport and Newbury because of the differences in tactics and so forth. One's agriculture, one became shipbuilding. Was all encompassed at once, at one time. So I'm just trying to give a quick, brief history of what's going on and why we're doing what we're doing. Create the original look around the corriery of the pond, moving the trees in, away from the wires, allowing them enough room so they can have full, beautiful health and majestic form, which it once did, eliminating the walkway around the backside of the pond, and still keeping the walkway, which runs between the Arnold Rock Memorial to the flagpole and the memorial, so that it will bring people there, allow access for handicapped and disabled to at least get to the flagpole. They can still come to the edge of the pond, and they can go down and hopefully read and give respect to the Arnold Rock and so forth and the history. We have eliminated from eight feet, because some people thought that might be too much. Now, as a landscape architect, I look at it and say everything's to scale. Eight feet would work in scale. There's now, if anyone actually goes to look, which is hard to see, but there is a walkway, six feet there, which is stone dust, and there's like this granite cobble kind of beat up along the edge. We've eliminated the eight foot to six foot, so it's six foot wide, which is there now, just in front of the pond edge. That'll lower it. Any lower than that, you will be out of scale, and I would say don't do anything at all. Six feet is the minimum, or it just looks ridiculous, it would be ridiculous, and we won't have the same access. So we're going from eight to six, that's what we're changing. The other part that we're changing, or not changing, but we would like to, we're proposing, and we have two different plans, and they'll be here on Monday, and they're going to be at the selectmen meeting on Tuesday, is through the recreation committee and the Little League, they have had many meetings, and they have said over and over and over that they do not like the location, even though it's been there for a long time, since the early 1900s, and this is what we're trying to get. Also, find out the date that it was actually put in. From everything we know, the baseball field's been there since the early 1900s, but we don't have a date. So we want to move it because, with their suggestions, it wasn't in our original design, but after talking with parents and players and their concern for safety, and it doesn't interfere with the mustache, just so everyone knows, because that'll come up, and we don't block any views, but it's because the sun angle in the afternoon blinds the batter, so they can't see. And certain children, parents won't let certain children play in the town of Newbury by field on this field because of that reason. They also don't like the idea that it's so close to the corner of Rough Lane and High Road, because it's dangerous if there's a fly ball and so forth, and the cars all park, and the kids are literally right off the road. So taking that into consideration and looking at the actual size and scale of the green, we can put in what are the dimensions for a Little League, not normal baseball, even though it's for all ages. You cannot have a baseball field on the amount of land that we have at the green for adult players that can really hit the ball. It's not made for that. It just doesn't work. It does work for Little League. It does work for Little League, and this location fits perfectly. The nice thing is, from my point of view, from an aesthetic, and also in consideration of all the neighbors, which we've had a meeting with, and most people have all signed on, as far as we know, they've written letters of support. They all have, actually. This is the historic house, set back here off this corner. There is no view, these houses still look straight across. These two houses look straight across. We're not interrupting any view whatsoever from the butters. Now presently, where it is located, it's mainly for safety, that's why we're, we're suggesting to move it. Right, um, is that you can't, when you come down Rough Lane, you look right in the back stop. Here, they can see it, but it's not that bad, they don't mind if the people live in this corner, but it's in their way. Where we're asking to relocate it, it's not in anyone's way. That backstop doesn't interrupt the view in any way whatsoever from any of butter. That was very important, I thought, because these people live along the edge of the green. Safety, we're asking to move the ball field. Bring back the look of the original green as it once was, we're asking to put in four-and-a-half to five-inch calipers, zelkova trees, to bring back that original layout. We're asking for pedestrian access, and just to make it so that, you know, it's accessible to at least get around the memorial, the flagpole, down to the Arnold Rock, a six-foot-wide goshen, which comes out of main, natural stone, flat, large, two-by-three, plus pieces, very close together, but water can percolate through, walkway. The benches are already there, we'd just like to move them accordingly. So that they make around, and we may add a couple, just so that people can sit around the edge of the pond? And the only other thing is the cattle. And this is the last thing, it'll be the very last thing, but we're proposing to put in bronze cattle eventually, that are life-size sculptures. And the reason we want to do this is because it brings to the attention today and forever in the future, the history of the green. We want to put black and white historical signs down next to them, so that when you read it, it'll explain when the town was incorporated, that it was incorporated as an agricultural town, that it was a setup, this was an original watering hole, set up in sixteen forty-two. The cattle brings all of the history right to the forefront. The offset, we moved them closer than we originally had in the plan, to the pond, and we have one calf that will be sitting down next to the one monument over here laying down, which will bring people's attention to the monument and give respect to the people. That's the one that's kind of set back near the Christmas tree, that's all by itself, so there's no walkway to it, it's in the grass, but we thought if you move right next to it, we'll put a lane, bronze calf, with a little sign, people will take pictures with it, they'll have, say, hey granddad, remember when we were down in Newbury Common? It'll bring the history of the green and of Newbury as a whole to the forefront. When we talked, I know this has been a concern for some people, but when we talked to Historic New England, they actually really liked the idea. This has been done throughout the world, this has been done all over America on historic greens, to bring the history to the forefront.
And we'll see whether we have this.
And that's the last, but, you know, thing that we suggested, a change.
And we have the public hearing, so we're continuing to listen. But Tiffany, what was the town? They just sent us an email from Historic New England, saying this historic town did it too with calves.
Yeah, by Garrison School in Connecticut. They have, they put the bronze cattle in there, and Historic New England was heading out there to do a meeting and had come across them. But they did express that they appreciated the idea of the cattle, but we're still taking input on that.
That'll be the very last thing we incorporate. I push it, because I think it's, I think it's really wonderful and a good thing, but we will do what the town wants. And we have made renovations according to what people have said in all our many meetings throughout the time that we've been moving forward.
So, you know, far from being insulated from any feedback, we've already taken away what people concerned, they were concerned, hey, doesn't that make it more like an urban park, if you surround the pond with stone? That's gone. Similarly, in terms of the selection of trees, Historic New England said, in the end, you're going to go with zelkova, zelkova?
Zelkova.
Zelkova, because that's the only rational choice. So they said, you know, this idea that you're going to use these other elms is not going to fly, it's not going to work. And you're going to end up potentially with diseased trees, so.
Well, you could use. This one came up, but the problem is, then you're taking a chance, I really don't want to. We know the zelkova, it has the same look, the same form, the same size, and there are no known disease or insect problems.
That's about it.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, but hope I didn't ramble on too much, I just wanted to give the history, and we will do that on Monday with chronological order as suggested, but we're trying to bring the history of the upper green and of Newbury as a whole, really, to the forefront and preserve it as what it was. It was a pastoral setting, which it still is. There were iterations, which they brought up that word, I'll say it again, I give them credit, because it's true. Things changed over close to four hundred years. There was no baseball field originally.
There were no.
That was, there were no monuments originally.
There were no benches.
There were no benches, there was no flagpole. There's actually one.
There was no retaining wall.
Which is located right over here, this retaining wall was put in, simply so that the water, when we had floods, didn't go onto High Road, it makes sense. So we're actually building out there to create a natural New England field stone wall, which matches all the stones along here. I forgot to mention that the stone wall's there, been there forever, and we're changing the grade to make it appropriate. We are regrading the entire, should have said this, but I guess I took it for granted, that everyone knows, but probably some people may not, we're regrading the entire green, we're raising it, and we're using a three-to-one mix between loam and sand, so we have good drainage, and we're going to get all, which we have on our drainage plan, it's the same as it's supposed to go now, where it all comes down this way, this way, and this way, it's on our plan, goes towards the pond. The only part that doesn't is because this is actually lower than High Road, we are going to raise this grade, so the water goes down onto High Road, only here in front of the pond, so we don't get all the salts, and it'll go right into Catch Basin, which is already there. So we're redirecting it to the street, which takes everything into Catch Basin, only in this section, where no longer will the kids or users have to play in puddles and jump around, you know, or try to walk their dogs, where it's completely flooded whenever you have a major snow or rainstorm. So fix the grades, put in a walkway for handicap accessibility, put in a new tree plant in four-and-a-half to five-inch caliber, which are like twenty-five feet tall trees, they're this wide around, four-and-a-half feet up, and they're, they're big trees, to create the original look. And because of concerns of players and the baseball league and the Recreation Committee moving the position of the baseball field, and that sums up.
We're so far, but we've got February twenty-fifth coming up for some public input, continued public input.
So we'd love feedback and questions, that's pretty much it.
Before we open it up for public comment, I'd like to know if there's any questions from our board. Rachel, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments at the moment, thank you.
Great. George, Larry?
Zelkova doesn't occur in nature naturally.
Zelkova?
Yeah, a combination of a couple of trees.
No, zelkova serrata is actually a zone five tree from Japan, and one of the first botanical gardens was Stockford School of Agriculture and Harvard, and they set up between Japan and the United States here in New England. Why? Because all the plants that grow in Japan, same zone, they grow here. So they have the same conditions, that's why. And it's the only tree that would replicate it, that we know for a fact as of today, I mean, who knows if he had a new disease, but there are no known disease or insect problems. So if you want to create that original look, it's the only way to do it. Unless you use Princeton elm, you take them a chance.
That was an educational question to me. The only other thing too, is do they turn color on the fall?
Yes, they turn it beautiful yellow.
Yellow.
Yeah. Yellow is your orange, or more yellow.
Just regarding the drainage, particularly along High Road, we do have a letter from the DPW director indicating he's very concerned that the drainage off the roadways onto the green not be disturbed. Is there any concern where you're diverting some of that drainage to the Catch Basin there?
Well, there isn't, because actually on the plan, it shows, we actually had them put in arrows, if anyone's been at other meetings, people, so there's less than two-foot difference, two-foot difference anywhere on this entire area with our contours. But all of it, we're going off, because you cannot change the benchmark, which is the elevation of the existing roads, but as it is now, it all swoops down. We want to make it so it's the same, and you can see on the plans, I could change it, but kind of a pain, everything flows this way to the pond, as it does now, but we don't have puddles. We're just eliminating the puddling, raising it up, and getting the proper grades to go where we want it to go. So in concern of the DPW, I agree a hundred percent, it's always doing exactly what it does now without puddling, except as of right now, if you look, because of this retaining wall where it is in High Road, this area from here to here, and right here's Catch Basin, right in this corner, which is across the crosswalk, which is kind of odd, but there's a crosswalk coming from the bank, and it goes right into where the Catch Basin is, which is so weird, but we're, it's happened to DPW, it's just, it's odd, right? Who would do that? But it's done, that's how it is today, existing. We're suggesting, instead of the salts and the water going into the pond, we're going to, only in this section, which the road naturally comes down, and all the water goes in here, it's only along the edge, where we have to raise it, so we're going to the street, not into the pond, all the road salts and all the contaminants.
But not, you're not saying into the street, you mean into the edge of the street, then the Catch Basin?
Yeah, but it, yeah, yeah, the edge of the street, where normal rainwater flows.
Yeah. And this has been studied by the group, right? The, we have the wastewater drainage.
You talk about the botanicalist and all that?
No, the folks, we did the wastewater.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did.
We did a wastewater study, so it's not going anywhere that.
Conservation commission's behind it, they're a hundred percent, I mean, it makes total sense, I've been doing this my entire life. We want to use all the water for his concern, it's the same, we're just fixing it so we don't have puddling. The only difference is, right now, everything along here, it goes this way by, when we have high rains, into the Catch Basin, but on this area, it's lower, it goes into the pond. We just want to prevent the salts from going into the pond, that's it. It's really simple, actually, both a tennis rise or something.
Yeah, you mentioned, I think, the last thing that you're going to do, list of phases. Have you finalized the phases, and do you have a construction budget yet for each phase?
We have, yes.
Something we'll be able to see at some point.
Oh, yeah, no, we already have it all together, so we can show you, and we actually had it presented last time with all, all the phases, and it's all written. Now, the only thing that's changed now is between, I think it was nine and twelve, this section, we've eliminated the part where we're putting in the walkway. We're still going to make it so it's a uniform circle with the benches. And make it, that's all. So we're just working off what's existing, we might add a couple more, if, if people request it, otherwise, we're using what's there. So that doesn't change.
So we save some money, which is nice, and as soon as, you know, you know, assuming, knocking on wood or something, as soon as we have a final approval, we can get the kinds of monies in the, you know, for instance, Newbury Port announced some very large grants for its parks, but we, you know, in terms of the big donors, they all want to know that it's been approved, there's a green light, so, but nonetheless, we're, we're expecting to have no trouble at all, but we do need the final approval, because we have people holding back on big checks.
But you're going to construct each phase as the money is?
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we.
To answer your question, excuse me, Keith, I'm sorry, but.
Burn, please.
Should have answered it better. Bottom line, we set it up in these phases, so that they're completely paid for before we start. So phase one's done, which will be right along here, because we have to fix the wall. If you, again, on Monday, I'm going to have pictures and close-ups and so forth, the existing retaining wall's concrete wall, and it's got cracks, the upper part as bluestone as a cap, it's all broken. We're going to fix it, we're going to veneer it, we're going to build the wall up, just a sitting wall, and come down in front for structural stability. By doing that, that allows us to raise that grade, so that the water in this area will flow, but that's all paid for beforehand. Nothing else happens, except for this phase. Then phase two, quickly, would be in this corner, because we will do the promenade, and we'll fix the grading in here, that's all, Hydro's seen it as well as we do, so done and complete. Phase, and this is all open to the public the whole time, we're not closing off at any point in time, the entire.
Green.
Green, it's going to be open for use, that's part of the reason why we have sectioned it off, and it'll be fenced, et cetera, et cetera. Then this is the other section, so this half will be done in three different phases. The last part, because of baseball season, all right, and the kids playing, is going to be the grain, which, basically all grain, except for moving the ball field, and then planting the new trees. That all has to be done pretty much at once, because we're going to fix the grain and put it into a ball field, we've got to do it all at once, but that would be done in the fall going into the winter, and you would still have this section all opened up, so people can use it. So nothing's ever closed off completely, it's always open to the public, we're just going to do it in sections, and we're going to do it as we can afford to do it, and we start from point A to start B in that section, and it's a hundred percent done before we move to the next section. So nothing's half-assed, or, you know, you don't get funding, is the concern, what happens? Well, that phase is all done, as soon as we get enough money, we go to the next phase.
Yeah, but I, I think we're going to run ahead of the phasing, and, you know, the fuel will come in, in advance of his ability to build it anyhow.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll have, you know, but that's answering your question, we're not going to do half of something, be like, oh my god, we're out of money.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the concern.
If you had the okay today, when do you think you might complete this? In other words, how long is the project going to take?
You're looking at a good three months, four months, three to four months, depending, but we, it really depends on when we get the approval, and then it's going to depend on getting financing, because the banks and other people have already signed on, but they want to make sure that we have the town approval before they put any money for it, which makes complete financial sense. Once we get the approvals, the money will roll in, once the money's there, then we have the money to buy the supplies and to do section, section one through three, section four through six, whatever it is, as we explained, and we have it all drawn out, which will be the Select meeting on Tuesday, and then the town meeting at the Round, the Round School, which is on Monday, if anyone wants to attend. But then we're going to go into complete detail with all kinds of photographs of existing, the past, what we're proposing, all the sections, but in a quick summary for this meeting, and the revisions that we're proposing, I hope I answered the question, we're going to have the money once we move forth. But people aren't going to give money and write their checks if we don't have approval.
Yeah.
Do you have a question you want to?
Um, I did, I had a couple of questions. One is, and maybe this is for Martha, but this is, is this, am I right, this is Water Supply Protection District?
It is.
And that's part of why we're?
That's the Select and Special Permit, that's what they're.
Okay. And what is the water supply?
It's actually, it's in, within the radius of the wells, shown on our Water Supply Protection District, Overlay District, at the elementary school, also at, on the Bashal property. So they're kind of.
Those are.
Three circles, and there's a well also, and that's property. So.
Okay.
You know, hydrologically, they haven't actually been mapped out, they're just kind of various areas, and so it comes actually quite, just beyond Town Hall and to the edge, far edge, the east edge of the fire station.
Okay, so all of these improvements meet the parameters of whatever activities should go on in water supply?
Well, that's what the Select would have to determine, if they have a special permit on this.
I was curious about, you described iterations of the aesthetics and uses of the property, which I'm looking forward to seeing more on that at your public meeting. And in terms of the trees, you mentioned zelkovia being going, being the only tree species that would sufficiently go back to the original look. So I'm just curious about what, there have been iterations, but what original look are you, are those trees matching?
Originally, when they laid an elm, it was pastoral ground, they didn't have elms in sixteen thirty-five, but as time went on, they replanted the periphery. But as time went on, they replanted the periphery of the common with, as they did all over America. With the majestic Elms, because they grow up like a big umbrella and they come down and they hang down. It was that look.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Dutch elm disease. And if you look at the original, the oldest pictures that we can come up with, they have it surrounded with them and we're in a picture of it.
So I would just.
We don't have, that's the closest tree that comes without any disease or insect problems, that gives you the same form and height and look. And unless you're hot, most people don't know the difference.
I would propose the comment that there are aspects and values to trees beyond the aesthetic. So I personally have the opinion that native species would be more appropriate on a town green than Japanese species. I also think there's wildlife habitat and other value in that diversity of native species. That you wouldn't get with a, you know, a monopoly of one particular tree. Just, that would be my.
You know, there have been a lot of concerns about that, but if we're trying to go to the historical preservation or restoration of historic greens around New England. Which is actually what greener is all about. And we wanna bring back that look. And you can bring a lot of different trees in, of course. You're not gonna ever come back to that preservation. It's not, that's totally different from what we're trying to do. We want to bring it back to the original look, to the pastoral setting and bring the history to the attention of the users today and for the future. And keep it in that look and that onset and also make it accessible to handicapped and disabled. Pretty much it. I mean, if you wanna go back to, which we've had lots of concern about for the history of it. There wouldn't be a baseball field, there wouldn't be, there's actually a post right here that has a big light that got shut down. But there's a big huge light that goes on when the kid was getting today. It's still there, it's not working.
The school was here.
That light never should've been there, it never should've, there was a school in the northwest corner. That was built in sixteen forty-six.
Condos now.
No, no, sixteen forty-six, I actually know the whole history, which we could do on Monday, but if you wanna know, there's only one building. That was the first parish. Now, there were two other buildings, there were three of them altogether that were built. Those three, one, the last one burnt down. They had rebuilt to make it bigger, I think it was, well, I have it all written down, but anyway. Bottom line, in the eighteen hundreds, I believe it was eighteen eighty-nine, no, eighteen ninety-eight. They ended up, or eighty-nine, they moved the first parish to what is today, the First Parish Church, right up the hill. On the upper hill along High Road. That's still the same church today, that was originally the first parish house. They, at the same time, within a couple of years, they ended up, the school was, well, they took from Triton, which we think are now Byfield and so forth. The school wasn't big enough, they built the Woodbridge School in eighteen ninety-eight, which is now condos, which is directly across the street. Still there today, it was turned into condos several years back. But the only building that was ever on the green was the first parish, which was an offset from what I understand, from all the history. But there was the first parish and then that moved up to the upper hill. Fred, help us, cause we're looking for feedback.
First Parish Church was never there.
The first parish house, it wasn't.
It was not there. It was across the street from where the church is right now. Where the cemetery is, across the street. That's where it was.
It says in all the history books and everything that the first parish was built. And we have all the dates and so forth and there's pictures, there's a building in northwest corner, which was set aside by the selectmen back.
Howard, do you know anything on that?
I did all the research.
Howard?
Okay, well.
That was the building, cause they asked us for the historical aspect of if we're gonna get all the geologists, which we contested.
There's a building that's not there anymore, so that's the bad point.
There was a building there, and that was the first parish.
And we'll, you know, we.
There was a building there, yes.
We want more feedback, obviously.
It's a school, it's not the first parish, that's what it was, the school.
Yeah, one of, one of.
Use this book.
One of the points of agreement, and I, we'll always have a diversity of opinions. We want that. But in terms of historic New England. They said the, that their choice would be these zarkova, zelkova?
Zelkova.
Zelkova trees, so unless they're not respectful of history. Then that is, their choice would be that. And I don't think, there must be some other.
I agree with you, they used the American elm.
Are these being flown in from Japan, or these are not?
No, god, we dig them, they're out of milk in New, it's Chichester, New Hampshire.
So they've been here for a while.
They're growing in Chichester, in New Hampshire, we're gonna dig them, Bowlin Borough, that they're gonna, big huge thing, and they're gonna ship them in.
No, but where else, my question was, no, but my question was where else, can we find out where else they are used in a historical setting?
They're used all over America to take up where they had American, the American elm. Where they wanted to replace the American elm, if you understand urban forestry and you understand anything about arboriculture. That's the only tree that's a hundred percent that we know of as of now, that doesn't have insect or disease problems. It was brought up, and I agree with you, I suggested sugar maple. And by raising the tree in the right sand mix and so forth, I know for a fact, I would put my life on it that we could have sugar maple. Which is what I wanted, but a lot of people complained because they said, well, you know, the wet ground, I understand that. So what is, what is the original look though? The original look was the American elm, which was used all over America and on our green.
Well.
It's the only tree for a hundred percent that doesn't have a problem. We could use prints, we're taking a chance, we're taking a chance.
That's right.
When they build a green.
It was a pasture, there were no trees, that was put on over time, an iteration. All of these are iterations. And as they explain to us in Historic New England, which I love the word, I keep using it. Things don't stay the same, this is four hundred years later. We wanna bring it back to the preservation and the look of the original green, but in today. In the twenty-first century, how do we do that? How, signage that works within? Lockways because of handicap accessibility with natural ocean stone that blends into the landscape? How do we do it? Now, we can say never have change. Fine, keep it as is. But I believe for the benefit of the town and for its users, this is an iteration to bring it back to its original glory. But in today's world, let's bring the history to the forefront and keep it for the generations of users for the future.
My only other question was, making a more attractive site, where do people park when they visit? Have you?
Same place they do now.
They park along the perimeter.
I would argue that that's not a very appropriate.
With all due respect, I would say, what are you gonna put in a parking lot? With all due respect, has there ever been parking? It's always been, at the beginning of time, from carriages on down, they parked along the parameters of the green. It is still today. It is private property, we cannot put in a parking lot, we cannot. There's nothing wrong with parking along the edge of the green.
There are some, there are some.
It's always been that way.
To your point, I agree, it would be, it would be wonderful.
If there's a crosswalk to the, you know, from the old Town Hall.
There's a crosswalk that does come right across here, that's what I was saying earlier. Unfortunately, it's right where, and we're gonna fix that, where the Catch Basin is.
But, but no, her point is well taken, which is that if there were a way to say, folks, you need to park over there, near the Old Town Hall. That would be even better, I think you'd come up with, in terms of like the feedback from the town, you're gonna, I would predict a lot of resistance. From people who say, look, why are you messing with our customs and habits for so long?
I'm just suggesting it's a consideration that town.
The town could look at that, and I would certainly support it.
If it's a more attractive, available, you know, property, it will attract more use. If the ball field is a better ball field, it will attract more use.
Yeah.
I think it's a consideration the town should have.
I, I think that's a great idea. That's a great.
If that happens, I would suggest that we come up with parking, keep it as is, there is no place to park.
She's saying, she's saying, she's saying that there is parking near the Old Town Hall.
I'm not proposing it's your design, I'm saying it's an issue.
For the town, yeah.
So I think, I'd like to say, if there are any more questions from board. First, I'd like to thank you and I appreciate your passion for this project. It's demonstrated and it's appreciated and it's good to see positive energy coming into our town. I'm really encouraged because the way the ball field looks is, when you're hitting that ball, you've got a real advantage. Because if you hit it far, that little guy is gonna have two feet to throw uphill. So it's gonna be a real good challenge, whoever's handling it is gonna win the game. So, you know, it's something to look forward to. Uh, we haven't had any problems with the prowl lane, with one of our two intersections in town that has a stoplight with accidents there, have we?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I can certainly check with the chief on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be the only public safety thing that I would have concerned, something like, uh, wrong slating, not stopping at one of our two towns.
I think the only time that happened was when our, one of our DPW trucks lost an axle.
Alright. Just so you know, there is a guardrail right there around that whole corner and I've lived here for a long time and yes, there have been accidents, but it hit the guardrail.
Good. If there are additional questions from board members, I'd like to open it up to the public for public comment. If you'd like to come up, identify yourself and then ask a question. Come on up.
Oh, I gotta come up, huh? Fred Thurlow, twenty-six, from Ashville. Well, first off, we were just talking about the parking last time, I asked, did you survey and find out where the pavement on the street is in relation to the right of way? You haven't surveyed that yet? You're talking about the parking around the green.
Yeah, people park a lot.
How much, how much of where they park is part of the green and how much of it is the right of way of the roads?
We're just keeping the green where it is and.
But we're not changing it.
We're not affecting the parking.
Do you mean, so?
Yeah, I mean, part of that grass is probably part of the right of way of the street.
Of course, it's usually ten feet in, anyway.
It depends, that's right, it could be ten feet in, so maybe they're only parking on the street.
Yeah, we don't care. Yeah, we don't care.
Were they parking? No, what I mean, we're not altering it.
That's right, but that's not parking on the green, that's not parking on the.
We're just saying everyone does, they pull in with two wheels on the grass and they park the edge of the road, that's just what they do.
The grass of the tree.
Human nature.
I got this old picture from late eighteen hundreds, and you're a tree man.
Yeah.
That's not a, that's not an elm.
No, but let me show you another picture which shows you.
None of those around.
Because they were dying off, but it's hard to explain, Fred, is what they did, and you can see them further across. What they did is, as the American elm was dying, they started planting new trees, especially along green streets. So that they would replace what the American elms are.
This is only eighteen hundreds, the elms were not dying in the eighteen hundreds.
Right.
And, and truth be known, what killed most of the elms around here was the hurricane of thirty-eight and the hurricane of fifty-four. That's where most of the elms went.
And also, there's no place anywhere in America that keeps the elms.
I know, but that's what happens here. That's what happens here.
Well, that's interesting.
It's interesting, and I have pictures before that, that show where they were separated and I showed you that.
And the state went ahead and planted ash trees to replace them, which weren't native to here, and they have taken over.
Yeah, and they planted Norway maples because they were free and they're considered a weed tree. We have silver maples, Norway maples, two ash, we have Wynden, we have, I have a whole list of what's existing on there. I get it, but if you wanna go back to the original look, and these are way too close, you see how jammed in they are, you don't get.
I, I can, yeah, I was gonna ask you, alright, that's a question.
It's wrong, if you look at the original pictures, they had big beautiful forms. That's what we're trying to create.
What's the spacing, the spacing tree is true?
I believe it's like sixty feet, we have it here, you can see it, so there's, there's sixteen trees presently, there's nineteen trees.
Yeah, I know that, I can with them, yeah.
Yeah, we have sixteen, we're keeping the shadow, which is down in the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of stumps, cause they keep dying, they don't replace them.
They found, dropped the law, there's no question about it. That's why we're in this mess, since the town has dropped the law, there's no question about it.
Yeah, and I agree, but those are not planted right, those are way too close and you can't see the form on any single tree in that picture. But another picture, you do see exactly that, which is a Florida.
No, actually, standard planting, at least street trees, standard planting distances between thirty and fifty feet.
So why are you doing sixty?
We're doing sixty because what you have to do is have enough room. What ends up happening is because of this tee, we have one tree here and it's on the planting plan, which is in the plant, so I can pull it out. There's another tree here and another tree here. There's no trees along here, which there currently are. And then we have a tree, a tree, a tree, a tree, a tree. But when you space it to make it equally and far apart to give the aesthetic look. You have to have a certain amount of room between each and every tree, or else you have them this close and the other ones way over here. No, it has to be uniform.
That's why it's the standard of thirty to fifty feet, that's why.
And at sixty feet, you have a difference because the canopies aren't together, you have that little bit of room. So again, it's about the form and the majestic look of the tree, which we have the pitches before that, that did exactly that.
Okay.
Well, that's true. Okay, uh, let me go down my list here. Oh, on the ball field. Yeah. Friend of mine made a good point, the, the kids complain because the batter has to face the sun here.
It's not really, the kids, the kids would do it, it's the parents.
Oh, yeah, but that's a.
It's a combination of the family parents.
My friend made a good comment, you turn it around the other way and now everybody in the field is looking at the sun. So instead of one, two people are catcher and the, they're all looking.
The sun's over here in the afternoon, the sun's over here in the afternoon, shines like this, if you look at a sun angle, if they're here.
The sun is, the sun is.
The sun comes around like this.
The sun is here in the afternoon.
Yeah, it's not in their eyes, it's not in their eyes.
It's in the west northwest eye here.
But see, as the day goes on, depending on the time of day, it comes around this way.
We know when they play.
By positioning this, I know for a fact, I'll show you if you want, I'll do it, and you can see the sun angle. Cause they have it on computer, show you exactly when, time of day, per month, and show exactly where the sun angle is. We honestly don't care, we'll keep it where it is, this is only because recreation, the parents asked us and moving. So it's not aligned with the original plan, don't you object to that? Come to Monday's meeting and tell the parents and the students, I mean, the players.
Well, I hope they'd be here because this is where they should be, Monday's meeting is on a different matter, that's a other matter.
You know, that's a town meeting.
This should be the design matter, oh, this is your meeting, I mean.
Town meeting for everyone that cares and concerned. Selectment is Tuesday.
Well, so just as background.
This is only for the plants.
We never intended to move the ball field center. So the selectmen asked us to include the folks from Little League and Recreation. And they said, boy, if you're gonna do this, we would really ask you to move the field in this orientation. So.
Overwhelmingly, it's important, so we took that under consideration.
Do you not like, do you not like that setting or?
Oh, for several reasons, I don't, but I will say this. I went to Google Earth and I, I looked at a lot of ball fields between Newburyport and Boston.
Okay, yeah.
Including Fenway Park. And there's only maybe two or three ball fields that are in this general orientation. Most of them run north-south.
Right.
That's the traditional, obviously the traditional one.
So that's what.
Fenway Park is different, but never mind.
We're trying the best we can, you see the angle, but you can't because of the positioning of where the ball goes. This was all done on spec as to how it works. It was scientifically done, there's a reason, and if you look at the arrow and look here. That's the best we can come up with, under the circumstances of what we have to deal with.
Now, now, this ball field, when I was a kid, that's nineteen fifties, you know, it was over here. But there was no ball field, there was a rudimentary backstop. And there was a one place where home plate was, and there was a one place where first, except for, you get my drift.
Yeah.
There was no real layout.
Yeah.
It was, and, and it was, it was a pickup game. And that, that's what it was used for. And a lot of adults have used this right up until, maybe ten years ago, softball was very.
Right.
Maybe, I don't know if you've been there long enough or not, but.
Softball, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, softball was very common, they wish could still be played, because they're basically the same parameters as the league. But it was over here. And baseball started in, what, seventeen hundreds, I've been told.
Okay.
The odds are pretty good by the middle eighteen hundreds, there was ball being played here.
Yeah.
And it's evidently always been played in this general orientation, yeah, that's just for history.
Yeah, no, that's cool, we're trying to find that out and we thought that according to what normally is done around the one one, there's a historical record with the selectmen. Unfortunately, there was damage to all those files.
Yeah, yeah, I think they have fired them, yeah. But my other concern with the ball field location is, is pumping for the, for the musters.
We spoke with them and we went out there with the actual design, exactly where it's located. We measured them off and they said it wouldn't be any problem at all. What they're going to do is slightly position where it goes here, slightly off and it all goes here. They said it wouldn't be any problem because it's still be the back door. This is the only part, is the backstop.
That's right.
So the backstop and the benches do not interfere, they told us, this was very critical, we met on site, we actually went through all the measurements. And marked it all up and they said there's no problem, we have a letter to that effect.
Okay. Okay. What else, Fred?
Uh, let's see. So you're gonna remove all the trees, all the existing trees, every single one?
Correct.
We're counting on you, huh?
Look, I, I love trees. Look, I, I love trees. The reason is, we want them to mature at the same time.
I see the trees in the back, yeah, those alone are pretty healthy.
A lot of them are not. Naturally, if you talk to Tim, he'll tell you, but what ended up happening is people get into an uproar whenever you want to remove a tree, especially on the common, and they're, normally what's happened in the future, on the past, according to Tim, and I've found out from feedback, is the trees never get replanted. So everyone gets in an uproar. Most of them are in sad shape. The Norway maples, again, I have it all marked out. But if you are going to create that original look from a historic perspective, and by going with large trees to begin with, if we want to go with that look, we want them all to mature at the same time, so they all have the exact same height. You don't put one end as a spindle and another one as a big tree, it looks ridiculous. And it'll be a hundred years, there's fifty years, before you ever get to what we're trying to achieve in a short period of time.
Long after we're all dead.
Yes.
But we can do that now, we don't have to.
Long after they're all, we're all dead, and those trees all get in trouble and die at the same time, they're all gone at the same time.
Well, then I'd be back to the original green.
Well, the original green. If you're ever going to go to the original green, it was forest, except for this, which I believe was swamp. I believe this was all swamp.
Right, yeah.
That's right, it was all.
Actually, meeting house pond, yeah, I believe that was all swamp.
Yeah, and that's why the selectmen, when they did it, they had it, it was hand dug to what we have today. This was natural water from the underground spring, it was a watering hole. They ordered that it be dug out to create what we have today, to create a larger watering hole and use that natural underground spring for the cattle and the livestock. That's how that came about.
Now, I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but I think I asked a question, so a lot of people are interested in it. Now, with the gas, the pond level. Now, you got a drain here in the high road, a drain here somewhere, catch basin up in here somewhere. Do you know where that catch basin drains to?
From what we understand, and we went through this with the Conservation Commission, is that it actually drains down, it comes across here and down Parker Street.
I believe it does, and I believe it drains at the same place that this drains.
Yes, I mean, that's just what we know from.
And if you look right now, if you've looked at that pond lately, and I'm sure you have.
Yeah.
The pond level is ridiculously high, and we've had two months in a row of below-normal precipitation. And yet that pond is ridiculously high, and I made this point before, but there is a problem with this drainage, which is causing a lot of this problem here. It used to drain, and it's, it's the victor again. There's a cover that is up here. It used to drain the other way to meeting house pond. And when I was a kid, that was the case, and it, this was not as much of a problem as this. So there was, there was a problem with that, there was a problem with that drainage somewhere. And I would, I think that, without addressing that, we're still gonna have water back up here. Even, even with your regrading this, I'm afraid it's still gonna back up, because that drainage is a serious problem. And it probably isn't, your problem is probably the town's, but it's a problem.
Right. We, we would like to talk with the DPW and when we get to that point and try to deal with that. Unfortunately, well, we can't be breaking up roadways. We discussed that last before. That's something that's in town, but we would work with them on that. But by raising this, um, and you have to look, grading plan, it's not going to hurt, and we already have, and I have pictures, it does drain through. Problem is you have low areas, and it puddles up and it collects all the water as is today. If we do the proper grading, it's all going to flow and percolate through. So we're gonna eliminate that problem, and I don't see that happening unless you have extremely high water tables to the point, then we're gonna have problems everywhere, not just on the grading.
Okay, we got an elevation here of twenty-nine point five feet, which, which sounds awfully high for me, but anyway, that's twenty-nine point five feet. We gotta know what the elevation is where that drain pipe dumps out into the pasture.
A hundred percent correct, so what ended up happening when you get, when you get to that point.
I have a feeling only about two feet difference.
And the DPW may know, but then you have to say, how do we make that grading? So, but we don't know that until we get there, and again, that's a town issue that we'd like to address. We're not changing anything that's gonna work the same way it does now, but by raising it, we're getting, we're gonna have the proper grading. But that should be addressed at some point in time, and we would work with them, but that's a town issue.
Something, something will be worked out.
That's up to the town, yeah. It is, it is. Now, are you gonna do any dredging to the pond, and what happened with the aeration?
The aeration is still there. It says aerated fountain, and it's basically one of the floatable ones with the chain that they use on golf courses.
Well, actually, no, this is a floatable one, I believe, I think.
Or the one that was existing, the one we were suggesting, but if we find out that that one's usable, because you brought up the fact that it was once there, the town had put it in, it stopped working, it's still there supposedly, we can look into that. We're proposing to put one in that just like they do on the golf courses, just to keep it aerated, and then you can take it out, it won't get skated on it. Pretty simple. We'll do it all over.
I would, I would prefer a bottom one, because it's more natural looking, one on the bottom, instead of something, we're talking about one that has a lake fountain, right?
Yeah, right, it's just a very small area, it's basically aerated.
They have, they have, they sit on the bottom, and they have very, very little impact.
We're open to all suggestions, and if that one works, great, saves us money.
Well.
Get it working, but it may not be worth it, it could cost, they might just replace them.
Fred thinks it should have tuna.
Well, I know, probably Riley that does it.
Well, I don't wanna lose the trail here, yeah.
But anyway, uh, that's if it's a bottom one.
Don't do one.
Uh, let's see. Nope, that's it. That's, that's my conversation.
So Fred, you're generally supportive for.
I'm very, I'm very happy. I think we're making big progress, yep, I think we're making big progress.
Alright.
And, and generals, it happens, so.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
My inputs, and believe it or not, I really appreciate it.
Please come up, identify yourself and. Get your address in.
Yeah, I guess my first con is critical thinking on what's going on here, and I appreciate what you're trying to do to make improvements. But I think they're very focused on what you want to do, maybe versus what the town wants to do. And that's why I was saying, I'm not so sure going back several hundred years to drink what was several hundred years ago is what you want to do. Maybe you want to get someone in between the pivot point and still affect some of the changes you want.
So that's what we're trying to do by bringing the water, like, it was suggested to use the natural ocean stone to do that, but I think that's still a good point, Jim.
That being said, with con after the trees, I'd love to see the nice sugar maples there.
Yeah.
And a question, how many trees are you talking about, four or five inch calipso?
It was sixteen trees.
Sixteen?
Which are nineteen, nineteen other.
Now, you're saying next month, you're gonna have some pictures?
Yes.
Pictures of these full blown trees?
All that forward is with, well, pictures and so forth.
Okay, so you'll, people will then be able to see what a full blown trees of your Japanese tree look like. Everybody knows what the sugar maples look like, and maybe some others, or maybe a mix of some difference. On your, a comment on survey, I think it's very important, that you, have you had to hire the survey to put a baseline in this? Surveying is the scale.
Yeah.
Just, just so everyone knows, if I may borrow this marker for a minute, we have a complete plan that shows the drainage, but just so you can see, answer your question.
Is this a handle?
This is, well, no, it's not. We spent a lot of money, but you can look at it, and I'll make a copy for you and send it to you. But if you look at our drainage plan, we actually put all the arrows in because it was people that don't know how to read a plan. It shows exactly where the water goes.
It's extremely, it's extremely difficult for people, general comments, when they keep getting interrupted. And there's a lot of people there who are, whose time is valuable and is wasted time.
If you want to look, it's right there.
Again, trying to ask a question, get an answer. Too much long commentary on the whole presentation, just a general comment, my. Are these drawings available, um, to be PDFed and mailed out? If the town to put them on the website so people could hold on at home on the computer?
We can make it that way.
That would be a great value to those who like to do that. Then they can blow up the school screen on the scales.
Blow up the school, careful. No, I'm not kidding.
But what I'm saying is, to stand here and look, and not being able to even see what's on the drawing, because you have to be on top of it to do that, to make that available, to make pictures available, and I, you have any slides on these slide presentations to be put up on screens? Is that gonna be helpful? Okay, that, that would be hugely beneficial.
And then we can do a PDF of history, yeah.
Question, what is the budget? The total budget around?
Between six and seven hundred thousand. Right now, it's six hundred and forty grand, approximately.
No, no.
But we've actually.
What's the budget? Actually, Tiffany, what's the budget?
It's gonna depend on where we get land with the approval with the cattle. So we're going somewhere between four hundred and seven hundred thousand. It depends on the cattle, and it depends on, we've cut out a lot of the walkway, so that's reduced a significant amount too.
Yeah.
So.
Four hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
And you can be how much?
Cattle themselves are. The cattle themselves are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus shipping and installation.
That's a total for all the cattle?
So it's probably one seventy.
So if you took two hundred thousand off the seven, then maybe five hundred.
Yeah, definitely.
And then we took out part of the walkway, we've taken out the, that whole section of walkway, so.
We can't make any money.
Wait, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're gonna lose everything.
That, that being said, how many yards of fill would you bring in?
I don't know, we have it all marked out. I, I haven't looked at those numbers, but we have them all.
In your schedule, you think from start to finish would be three to four months?
Yes.
But it's gonna, but it's gonna vary around, let's be clear about the three to four months, it's also going to take into consideration from when we start and when Little League is, because we will not disrupt Little League.
You have phases, ideally, how many phases would you want to do?
Ideally with the, if we keep the cattle, twenty phases.
Say again?
If we have the cattle, there's twenty phases, but they can be done in chunks that are easier, but we have them broken out based on depending on when we start in the season.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, and so, and then Little, like I said, we're not gonna disrupt the use for them, so.
So Little League, all things given, Little League's gonna start in April, and they're gonna use the field April, May, and June, and then maybe then in late summer that you could start at the ball field. Then you'd be a ball field in September and October, November, and be easy.
What's the correction?
Just to let you know, there's twenty steps, but there's like four phases. So, but there, there's twenty steps. I mean, moving the benches is a step.
If you realistically, realistically on a schedule, you, you could say three to four months, so you could say twenty phases.
Twenty steps, four phases.
If you have broken continuity, what is the timeframe, starting in April, to finish the total project? Would you do it this year if you had all approvals?
Yeah, we would start as soon as possible. Would we be done by January?
It's really, here's the problem, we can do the first three phases this year. We can't do where we possibly.
Let's take all things, all things into. All things into consideration. Let's talk about raising money, let's talk about the steps, the phases, all of it. I think we should be safe to say weather every consideration. We need nine to twelve months.
Okay, that's, that's more, to me, that becomes more reasonable, realistic, you know, sitting here talking. So you're not really saying we'll be done this year, it could possibly be a two-year project.
Sure, correct.
I mean.
Because again, Little League, that's a big part of it. We're not gonna disrupt that area.
But I think it's important that you lay out to the planning board and the general public, listen, it's maybe a, a nine to twelve month project. By the way, we're not gonna work December, January, and February, so it's gonna be spring, summer, fall this year, and spring and summer and fall. And we get five hundred thousand dollars and that.
And melt for the town, you understand that?
I do understand, and I guess that's my last comment, is, does the town really want this to be done privately, or do they totally want to control expenditures and in total control of it? I value greatly what all of you have done, the time and effort to, to make things better, and by planning, a big advocate of good, clean planning to move things ahead. But, and this is, this is between planning board, the selectmen, the town, how they want to handle this and make sure that the money's coming in. Is there any way that the contributions could be brought, put to a town kitty, it can't be done to the ball field?
So, that's, wait a minute, wait, 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 because that's up to the board of selectmen to decide how they want to handle that, whether that they want to maintain control, or whether or not they want to accept it as a gift, and that's gonna be a continued dialogue with the board of selectmen going forward. That meeting was supposed to happen, but because we're gonna do an informational meeting on Monday, they delayed that agenda item. So they are, the board of selectmen along with town council are having that conversation.
That's their decision.
Will they be accepting the gift, or will they be saying, okay, we want to maintain more control?
All right, so that's still up a year, but that's the dialogue that's going on, and that'll settle under the control of the selectmen.
It's still a year.
That's gonna continue to go on, yep. Correct.
By the way, to your point, if the town were to say, we commit to funding this ourselves, and we thank you for the plans, and we will actualize those plans on our own dime. Good. Absolutely good, we'll walk away. We just want the commitment.
You're dreaming.
If that were the case.
It's a gesture.
We're raising the money.
I understand you're raising money. My point being is, can that money, if the selectmen agree, be put into the town committee, and can, could, selectmen control that? And hire the contractors with your.
So the way that that would work is if the selectmen decided that they wanted to maintain control, it would have to go out to bid, and they would follow, like, you have to follow a whole different process.
Normal procurement process that's required within the state laws versus your procurement would be on your own means of.
Ours would be a gift, and ours would be done right our way with our.
Unless, I'm sure, at less expensive cost than normal.
Yeah, we're trying to save money bottom line.
In this day.
Right.
And it's on our, so we're trying to, people that donate, so that's where it comes down to.
But yeah, there's, there's a lot of options.
So we're a bit encumbered in this sense. So far, just to be totally open, so far, we've paid Vern nothing. I don't want the bill from the planning process, so I assume that if Vern were to step back and say, give it to someone else, I think we're at seventy, eighty thousand perhaps in time, which we don't have to pay for if this is the contractor. If not, I expect an invoice, and I'd rather not have to get one.
If, when you, when you have approval, the day you have approval, how long do you expect it to take to raise the full funds?
Oh, what's that?
After you get approval, how long would you expect it would take you to get all your funding in place?
Um, all of the funding?
Yes.
I would say, I, I can certainly think that it won't be more than, I would say, four to six months.
That all fits into the schedule?
Yeah. I mean, we can get a big chunk of it from local businesses that have already said, you need your final approval. We can get through phase one and two very quickly, funding wise. The rest, you know, Lenny Mura has said he'll bring this to the state house, um, and we have other people who are gonna do our bidding for us. We have grant writers who are at the ready, who've all said the same thing, you can't, don't be silly. You can't get anybody to give you a grant if they think that you're gonna sit on the money and not get it.
Your next meeting is Monday at what time or location?
Our informational meeting is Monday starting at seven. It's being hosted by Project Greener, and we're gonna present it, and we're welcoming all the public feedback, and so.
That's at the Round School.
At the Round School, in the auditorium, the gym, or?
Yeah.
I think we've got the auditorium.
We have the auditorium.
Yeah.
The auditorium.
Round School Auditorium, there'll be, you know, a nice presentation, and, and then we're gonna take your advice and get the PDF done of these plans so that you can look at them at your leisure.
Is it possible after the meeting, you can look at the full size?
Of course.
Five to ten minutes? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll give you back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, well, I'd like to thank you for the presentation, for the discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, I have, I have one.
No, I'm sorry.
We pulled off, we're done.
One, one other comment, because it came from your other hearing. There's a lot of concern, and really valid concern, about continued hearings. They go on, and Martha said some of them have gone fifteen months. The problem with, with continued hearings comes from the State Enabling Act, which says that you have ninety days to act from the time the hearing closes. If you want to get rid of that problem, you want to lobby your, your state legislators to change the Enabling Act so the clock starts running from the time the hearing is open, not from when it's closed.
A general comment on the same thing, understanding why the first one meeting was put into continuance. I would suggest that any applicant have full information in your hands three or four days prior to a meeting, and if not, don't let them, don't allow them to go on the agenda. That would supersede all people watching at home for hours to see nothing, people showing up for meetings and things don't happen. It's a very simple request. You just tell the applicant, unless you have it in a timeframe, is that possible?
Not with a public hearing.
Not with public.
Because that's, the time and date certain is set at the previous session of a public hearing.
It can't be set contingent upon full information.
No, it has to be a time and date certain. You can do it with normal agenda items, but not with public hearings.
Problems with the state.
Now, would it be too much to ask an applicant, listen, by the way, if you're not gonna be ready, could you give us notice so we could change the agenda? And then electronically notice everybody at the time, that can't be done either.
Still, no, it still has to be continued at a public hearing to a time and date certain.
What Martha did offer earlier, for anyone who's interested in the Orchard Street project, that if they wanted to.
But Martha did offer earlier, for anyone who's interested in the Orchard Street project, that if they wanted to contact her, she would create an email list to let people know if, for some reason, it was not going to go forward, like tonight, for example, but it has to be on the agenda, it has to be called. Okay?
Even, even if you're saying it has to be called, even knowing at that time that it is gonna be into continuance?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a process.
Is there any notes you can put on the agenda saying, oh, by the way, there's a high probability this will be continued because we still don't have the information we need?
It still has to be.
Yeah, the public hearing, it has to be open, it has to be continued, I mean, that's state law. Okay, again, get back to what Martha offered earlier, if people wanna contact her in order to avoid having to come, you know, in a meeting like tonight, then she would, you know, make an email notice available. That said, just because we opened it, it doesn't mean someone can't stand up in the audience, even though we're anticipating continuance, make some sort of a comment that might be of public interest. Thank you very much, you guys have been amazing, thank you so much for another good meeting.
Yes, so.
No, you can sit.
At this time, we need to continue the screening, so we need to set in time and date to continue the screening.
You're good, man. I'm gonna work on that.
With that, with that in place, Martha, when would we consider continuing the screening?
Well, I guess it's a question actually back to the applicant, the National Public Information Session, the twenty-fifth. The selectmen's water supply special permit is the twenty-sixth. I know that you're working with historian, you're doing some research, they've, they've talked to you about to get more of a historic context, so perhaps the question's back to you, is when do you think would be an appropriate time for you to have enough to come back to the board with, make any revisions that you're planning to do, and do the research that you've been asked?
You guys meet twice a month?
Twice a month, first and third Wednesdays.
Can we have the third Wednesday, so it would be the twentieth of March? I guess it's on the month.
Yeah.
We have, it's the twentieth of March, so.
Is that March 20?
No, continue.
March 20?
No, not 20, I think it's the first week, so no.
Yeah.
That's like in a week. Yeah, that's my.
That would be fine, March 20.
Um, that's actually, we have a zoning public hearing that night, so it might not be the best.
So can we take the next one after that? I don't wanna go before the twentieth, so we'll take the next one.
Right.
So we're potentially looking at the April 3rd at 7:45.
That works.
Perfect, that works for you guys.
Any discussion from board members? No, entertain a motion.
Thank you. I move to continue the public hearing, or open hearing in this matter, to April 3, 7:45 PM.
I will check that out in a second.
Any discussion on the motions? Roll call on the motion. Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Martha, do you have the continuing? Yes.
Peter, yes.
Speaking out of turn, Fred.
So this meeting will be continued, April 3 at 7:45 PM. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
So what was your?
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted me to sign that now.
That's actually, that was only for the, for starting the process, because we had to extend beyond.
Okay, I see. Thank you so much, I can do that, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, no, I would suggest it, it's great. It's gonna be beautiful.
No diseases now, like, hey, we didn't have any.
We were just gonna continue our meeting.
Ash pre-borrow.
Thank you. Hey, Fred.
I didn't know you were hiding back there.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
My cousin's out.
Was it really?
Oh, yeah. So, were your cousins?
Oh, yeah, kissing cousins.
Wow. So was that meeting, the stairs was used at some point as like a place that people who weren't doing so well stayed?
It was kinda like a nursing home.
It was, wow. Interesting. I think I could use one sometimes.
Nice to see ya.
Substance of the application tonight, and you accept the application, and the application, she does have my name written on it, and I will have Mr. Don to substitute these plans, which would be corrected only.
Not good.
Not good. Not good.
Is that a problem?
I think.
If we have to sit through another.
You think I'm a nasty guy, but I don't know.
I have come from Milton, my mother was the third.
I'll agree.
Generally, the plan gets submitted.
The substance of the plan will be absolutely unchanged, it is only a typographical error here, but I frankly don't wanna have something go to record with.
Understood, understood.
Can the engineer bring it in and present it on his own account?
Um, you know, I think the board has to vote and sign, Larry, do you, can you provide some guidance on this?
Do we have anyone who's authorized just to sign it?
Pete is authorized to sign.
I mean, I oppose the question, is there any reason that, assuming the board, you know, were to approve this tonight with that change, that Peter just couldn't come in after the new mile I was receiving, just signing your office?
I guess that would be all right.
It's not a substantive change.
Right, understood.
It's purely ministerial.
Understood.
And I'm sorry, if it had in the entire plan with the legend on it, I would've picked it up. Because everybody's always spelling it.
What's the misspelling?
It says Polly, H-O-L-L-Y, my name is Polly, H-O-L-L-E-Y, my mother's maiden name.
Now, I guess if the board is comfortable with that, we'll take a vote to endorse him, and Pete, Pete is authorized, Pete and Rachel are each authorized to sign as the sole signatory.
That would be just purely.
Administering.
Administering.
Right, right.
That would be extremely helpful.
And Polly would like to.
So if the plan had been.
Yeah, he would.
So to adjust the legend with the statement.
The color section. Right, right.
So we ought to redo the plan now?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've reviewed the plan, brought up it a few times with Mr. Don, I don't think I presented anything or explained.
As far as I know, it should be very, very straightforward, this is a cutting off the house and surrounding land that was the homestead, my mother's home, my sister's home, my sister lives in it now, the will directs the co-executors to cut out this particular plot of land, and the rest of the land remains unchanged.
And my understanding is that it is in sixty-one A now.
No, this, the rest of the land is in sixty-one A, nothing in the plan that is being cut off has any sixty-one A implication.
Well, let me backtrack, right now, our assessor's records have the entire parcel is in sixty-one A, there are ten acres that are in sixty-one A.
Right, I don't think that's correct, I'm sorry, I think the, they were, the parcels were amalgamated for tax purposes, but there's only ten acres of it that's qualified for ten A.
There's ten. Yeah, no, there's.
And the four acres that we're talking about are just under four acres is not sixty-one A.
Um, I'm not, well, I'm not sure, and it doesn't, in terms of the endorsement, it doesn't matter, but my understanding is that the remaining land, the stay-in-the-family, will continue to be farmed.
Yes, and will stay sixty-one A.
As a new estate. And it will stay sixty-one A, yes.
This has no effect at all on that.
That's what I was, that's what I was.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this is, this is a house that was, a house lot, it's actually historical town, stone walls, this is a very old home, it went back to, I think, sixteen twenty. And the house that was built here was built by my parents in the early fifties, fifty-three, I think, on part of the cellar hall of the sixteen twenty house, it's a small cave, and it is shown here, and this is just cutting out this amount, and then the rest of this land over here, and over here, remains in the agricultural use that it has been for.
What are you doing with this lot, the lot you created, is it going to be sold?
No, it's my sister's home, the will directs it to be, she's always lived there since she was born, and she gets the house, so that's all it is, is, you know, making, making it possible for her to have title to her home.
Creating the title to the.
Yes.
Okay. Now, the gravel way always served this here, that it's served this here, and here too?
Where's, this is gra, this is the driveway.
Yeah, driveway, the gravel way.
There's nothing else over here except field, there is a, a grass, the tractor's used.
Okay, all right. I don't see any problems.
Meets the point of requirements, meets the area requirements. There were some questions that were raised, there's a key plan there, one of our requirements is that the remaining land be shown, it's shown there on the key plan at one to three hundred, the remaining land has not been surveyed by Mr. Donahue, but there, there are a lot of plans on record, and I did go through all of them, which are very clear on what the boundaries are.
Yes. Yes.
Remaining is fourteen point six.
Yeah, plus or minus.
Okay.
It was a pleasure to look at the aerial photographs of your property, which, it's just incredible back there to see the farmland, and goes down to the river, and you're not far from the, the town's gray meadow property in the back, you know, they almost up it, and there's some other conservation land, so.
It was a great place to grow up, and I'm glad it's staying in the family.
Of all the times I've walked down Orchard Street, you'd have no idea what was.
I know.
Down the drive. Behind. Yeah.
The leaning shed.
Yes.
The leaning shed, the leaning shed is good stuff.
Yes, yes, yes. But I've watched that over the years, continued.
But that, that leaning shed used to be very useful, I used to stand in it and wait for the school bus.
Will you entertain a motion?
I would.
I move to approve the, the form A approval not required plan, would the correction of Miss Creed's, spelling of Miss Creed's first name further move that the chair or vice chair, that'd be the chair, but vice chair, endorse the plan? No, without, without the necessity of bringing it back for the board?
Yes.
I appreciate that. I would just mention that my name now is Holly Creedmeier, but it is my name, Holly, that needs to be corrected.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Well, roll call on the motion, Madam Chairperson.
Uh, I approve, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
And I approve.
Thank you, appreciate that very much, here are the applications, the check, and the plans, I'll speak to Mr. Don tomorrow morning and make sure that he gets the corrected ones back, and it will be just this spelling here, so it's changed.
So everything else, everything else.
Everything else is fine.
Do you wanna take, do you wanna take?
Is that possible, or do you need to retain them?
It'd be better to retain the IR, what do you think?
Well, doesn't he have?
It'll be a new IR.
It'll be a new IR.
I'm getting a new one, probably hanging on to it, unless town comes to the vice, otherwise we can return it.
Okay.
You can swap it with you, you know, at that point, I guess.
Well, we don't keep the miles, do we? But they go to registry.
They go to the registry, right, we keep the prints of the formas, and then send.
Another question there would be if there's accidentally, the long one, got sent to the registry.
I mean, I could put a big X through that one right now.
If you wanna do that, I just, you know.
I don't know if the board is okay with doing that, just to make sure.
Sure, that way it's not gonna be processed.
We have the printed plan, do you need to.
I mean, I can make the correction right here.
Do not record.
Yeah, I'm just gonna cross this out.
I could do these kind too. If he is able to give you a new IR before the end of the week, this is Wednesday, yes?
Yes.
How soon would I be able to have something to get to?
Thursday, the town hall is open, Friday the town hall is not.
Right, right, so it's started tomorrow, and they just.
Okay, so I could tell the estate lawyer that he'll have a plan that he can draw a deed from very soon.
Yeah, he should, it really depends on Paul's schedule, when he can get in here.
Great, thank you very much.
He should apologize. He can, he can draw a deed from that.
I worked for the municipality for a long time, staff for town meetings and, you know.
The attorney can draw the deed from that, it's just a name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's approved, actually, I can give him the, the draft.
Might just need to update the date or something to that.
Yeah. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Follow with it, it's a whole meeting.
Should go with us?
I'm still there.
Excellent, we should continue on with our.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.
So as it stands, following discussion at the last meeting, I guess the vote would be to have Kristin step up to fill Jim's seat until the election, and to recommend, so that would be a recommendation to the selectmen, and also a recommendation to the selectmen to appoint Martha Leahy as the associate member until, through the end of the fiscal year, so June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay. Now, we're gonna have Kristin stand for that.
Yes, she's already pulled papers.
Okay, you've done that, do we have to vote on that?
Uh, not for that, but we do need to vote to essentially promote her, to have her appointed to full ownership to fill Jim's seat until the election.
So do you wanna take that first, is that first?
Sure.
One vote at a time.
Sure.
I move to have, to suggest to the board, recommend to the board of selectmen to appoint Kristin Rebs, right, last name?
Rebs.
Rebs, okay, to serve as a full member of the board through June first.
Till the, till the election, so it's May fourteenth.
Till the election, May fourteenth.
A second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Discussion, roll call, Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
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 And yes.
And now Martha, we're going to appoint, recommend to the selectmen to appoint Martha Leahy as associate, associate member of the board, period, right?
Uh, through the end of the fiscal year.
Through the end of the fiscal year, okay, I move to recommend to the board of selectmen to appoint Martha Leahy as associate member of the board through the end of the fiscal year.
Second. Discussion on the motion. All right, calling the question, Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 All right, so I will hopefully get that on the agenda, coordinate with Alan to get that on the agenda for next Tuesday's selectmen's meeting, or get a letter, is it okay if I sign it in your name, or do you want to?
Put it ahead. Okay, update on potential zoning and general law enforcement, pretty, pretty good on that?
Uh, we're good on that, I think what the board does need to do, since we're looking at a different target date than originally, is to set down March twentieth as the date of zoning public hearing.
Time?
Do you guys, seven ten, seven fifteen?
Because we already have.
Yeah, we're keeping it for now.
Okay, right, seven ten.
So we'll just.
On motion?
I move to set as March twenty, seven PM, the date and time. I move to set as March 20th, 7:00 PM, the date and time.
7:10.
At 7:10. Nope, and hearing. We'll discuss the potential zoning and general bylaw amendments for April 2019 here.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
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 And yes.
All right. So what we've done in the past is to put together a brief PowerPoint presentation of the amendments.
Let me spin you right over here so Rachel can see this.
Well, I've put a, I've lost you. All I can see is what looks like a still of Martha.
Oh, great. That's bad.
I don't know what happened to you on your end.
We can see you fine.
We can see you just fine.
Oh, that's good. That's good. I just have Martha with a piece of paper in front of me.
Sorry about that.
But that's okay. I didn't want to, you know, break up the meeting there.
I hope it's covering my face.
Pretty soon you'll be bronzed, my friend.
Bronzed. Very good.
Yeah, so I'll, I can take a first pass at putting together a PowerPoint on this. And I, I guess, you know, some, one of the comments that came out of last night, marijuana one, was to take consideration of daycare out of it altogether. So I guess one question would be, does the board want to discuss that now, or should we keep it as it is?
So the, the selectmen articulated that since the Cannabis Control Commission has been silent or does not include the daycare in its, just, regulation regarding the buffer zone, that he should also be silent on it.
The point is well taken, but I think it probably ought to be discussed at the public hearing. I mean, just because it's not really on the agenda tonight. And we sent it up in one form. If we're going to change that, I think it should probably be at the public hearing.
Right. Right. Other two suggest, one is they suggested that in this case, we don't normally have to notify others or parties in interest, except for out-of-town property owners if they provide their names, which they haven't. But it was suggested that we notify any, actually, probably all property owners within the areas that we're talking about, particularly the residential property owners. There was concern about impact on their properties. So I hadn't been to do like that.
As opposed to just posting it in the paper.
Right.
Let me ask you this. Are schools included in the buffer zones?
They are.
But daycare's not.
It is right now. It's not in the CCC.
Yeah, that's an invitation to dance and speak and let. Some way it'll make parents happy. Otherwise, you're going to fight it. It might not pass. I mean, you have an audience that has to pass it. I understand the selectmen's position, but if you have an audience that might, might not pass it but for that, then I would give it some consideration of leaving it in.
I can see what kind of feedback we get at the public hearing.
Right.
That might be an indicator of town meeting.
Well, it's also being reviewed by town council too.
And it is. Right.
So town council's going to compare what we, what we drafted against the CCC regulations and make a determination. So that may take the guesswork out of it. That may be fine. It's, you still come up with the same thing and say, no, buffer. But if enough people oppose it in town, it will not pass under those circumstances. If they have kids in daycare and they get up to, people they know that come in and say, no. This is fine.
The only other change that I remember that was really recommended was on the wireless to change the property line setback for the tower back to just the height of the tower. Instead of one and a half times the height of the tower. But again, it's already been proposed to them as it is. So I think we can just kind of keep, keep everything as it is and publicize that.
Well, I guess, now this is a question maybe for town council, now that I think it through. So we sent up some proposed zoning changes to the selectmen.
Right.
Okay. And the selectmen are coming back to us with something else. So what are we holding the public hearing on? Our original proposal or the, or the version that they sent back to us?
Right. They, they, basically what they've done is they've referred the four zoning amendments to us for public hearing. They continue, it can continue to morph through the public hearing process. I mean, I think realistically, probably the board could even make those changes now if they felt, you know, if you all felt that it was appropriate. But it is what I've been told in the past. It's all part of the process.
Yeah, but if, for instance, if the one and a half, if I misunderstood that and that wasn't Sam's suggestion, then I think it might make sense to put it back at just the height of the structure.
One time. Yeah.
Well, then we pose the question, and I'm not sure I know the answer. I don't know the answer. Otherwise, I wouldn't be asking the questions. But the proposal to the selectmen doesn't necessarily have to come from the planning board, correct?
Does not have to.
And any citizen can...
Right.
So suppose...
Sorry, could you say that again?
The, the initiation of the proposal to the selectmen doesn't necessarily have to come from the planning board. It can come from anyone. So suppose a citizen proposes to the planning board regarding the tower heights that it, that it be set at one and a half times the, the height of, of the tower. Am I making sense of our... Yeah, okay. And the, and the selectmen say, no, we think just the height of the tower is enough. And then do they send it to us saying, hold a public hearing on a zoning bylaw change to, to the height of the tower? Or do they send it to us saying, hold a, a public hearing on the proposal that we received from John Smith?
I mean, I think if a zoning amendment proposal were to come from a body other than the planning board, I'm guessing the selectmen would have the discretion not to refer it to the planning board for public hearing if they felt that it was inappropriate. I don't know that they have to. If it was by citizen petition, I think they would have to. 100 votes or 10 votes or, or whatever, but I'm actually not sure.
Me neither. That's something we maybe should think about between now and March 20th, is what is exactly, is it that we're taking up our original proposal or the proposal as modified by the selectmen?
I'm not sure if they modified it. They just made some comments.
Yeah, they made comments.
They didn't make motion. They didn't go...
Right. They didn't follow anything.
This is one thing you might want to consider.
They're even getting too far into the weeds here then.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm kind of taking their suggestions along the same lines of any other public input that we would get at a public hearing.
Then it's...
You know, it's really made of stone. The board votes on the language and then sends it on to Tracy to go on the warrant. And then after...
Could you just, could you just explain again? So when, who makes the final decision? If this does go, I guess, I guess my understanding was that it could always be changed along the way up to a certain point. I'm just not sure where that certain point is. But if that's, that's not the case...
It, it can be. I mean, it can, that's a point of the public hearing. So you take input then, and you can still incorporate those comments or changes into the final version that will then go to be submitted to the selectmen to be placed on the warrant for town meeting.
Okay. So, all right. So they go back and they, they approve it for the warrant?
Right. Right. And, and I think actually the finance committee may take a position on it. They usually don't. But the selectmen will vote to put it on the warrant or not put it on the warrant. If there are any amendments after that, they would have to be made in writing at town meeting. My understanding is that at that point, it couldn't be made more stringent. It could be less, made less stringent through a motion at town meeting, but not more stringent. So, for example, somebody couldn't, if, if the proposal is to have a 500-foot buffer zone from K through 12, somebody couldn't come in and say, no, we want to do it 750 feet because that would make it more stringent. Or they couldn't add in other sensitive receptors that weren't already on in the language because that would make it more stringent. They could do something to make it less stringent. That's my understanding, Larry. I don't know if that's consistent with yours.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, about that point yet.
I'm just, I think you gave us the dates earlier, but I don't have them in front of me. With the, how long do we have after March 20th before the, is it up until the selectmen sign the warrant?
Basically, I think what's going to have to happen is we're going to have to finalize the language that night and all incorporate it into the versions and send it to Ellen the next day because it's going to be on the selectmen's agenda for the next meeting, the 26th. So we'll be hearing, having, holding the hearing on the 20th. And this is why we're hoping to actually get it sooner so that we have a little bit more time. Holding the hearing on the 20th. We vote to finalize the language that night. Incorporate those. Send it on to Ellen for inclusion and to Tracy for inclusion on the warrant, which the selectman will review the 26th. They'll sign it on April 2nd.
And why aren't we holding the hearing on March 6th? Because we voted not to?
No, no. What happened was the, you know, originally the selectmen were supposed to take action on the 12th. That meeting was canceled.
Okay.
And in order to hold it on March 6th, I would have had to submit the ad to the paper last Thursday.
Okay.
And I couldn't submit the ad and have it published before they actually voted to refer it back to the planning board for public hearing.
Okay. So not being at the meeting on the 20th for me, what impact does that have on all of you? You, you still have enough of a majority or whatever is needed.
Yeah. I mean, it's a simple majority. So as long as we have core of the three, three members here, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't want to leave you hanging.
No.
And actually, depending on, when do you expect to get the appointments before the selectmen?
Next Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Okay. So you would be a full member then eligible to vote on that, if you were here?
Okay.
Right. Right. But Rachel will be back, so we'll have four members here, assuming that every, all the rest of you guys can be there. And Martha will be on the board, so she can, can't vote, but she can make comments.
That wraps that up. No new business?
No new business. We did the laser reports.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All right. Roll call. Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
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 So which will be? Rachel, let's turn it up.